Welcome to the Monday, April 1st, 2024 session of the Lake Forest City Council. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Certainly, Honorable Mayor Tack.
Here.
Alderman Novak?
Here.
Alderman Waldeck is absent. Alderman Notes?
Here.
Alderman Powers?
Here.
Alderman Preschler?
Here.
Alderman Gashgarian?
Here.
Alderman Weber?
Here.
Alderman Waller?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a forum.
Please, Ryan, rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Okay, first item on the agenda is comments by mayor. It's spring in Lake Forest, which means ward meetings are coming soon. Please join your aldermen for ward meetings to learn what's new in your neighborhood and what's happening in Lake Forest. The first one is the Ward Four meeting this Thursday, April 4th at 7:00 PM in Dickinson Hall. Next week are the Ward Three meeting on Tuesday and the Ward Two meeting on Thursday, both at Croya. The Ward One meeting is Tuesday, April 16th at Gordon Center. For more information, you can scan the QR code on the slide or visit thecityoflakeforest.com/wardmeetings. Next item is a proclamation for Arbor Day. Whereas Arbor Day will be officially observed in the state of Illinois on Friday, April 26th, 2024 by proclamation of the governor, and the planting of trees on Arbor Day is a traditional activity throughout the state and the city of Lake Forest. And whereas Lake Forest, with its environment of natural areas, is particularly dedicated to the observance of this day and has consistently throughout history enacted ordinance to preserve its trees and other natural assets. And whereas citizen groups, garden clubs, private and public institutions have actively supported preservation efforts and the renewal of natural areas through tree planting and landscape projects. And whereas the celebration of Arbor Day 2024 in Lake Forest will include the distribution of tree seedlings to the public at designated locations, and Arbor Day 2024 will be celebrated throughout the day in programs at schools and other locations at West Park, located at 850 Summit Avenue, on Friday, April 26th at 10:00 AM, where the city's official Arbor Day tree, one oak tree, will be planted. And whereas trees in our city, wherever they are planted, increase property values, enhance our business and residential areas, beautify our community and are a source of joy to gladden the hearts and promote the environmental well-being of present and future generations. And whereas the city of Lake Forest has been recognized as Tree City USA for 44 consecutive years by the National Arbor Day Foundation. Now, therefore, I, Stanford Art Tech Mayor of the city of Lake Forest, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 26th, 2024, as Arbor Day in the city of Lake Forest, and I urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, to support our city's forestry program, to plant trees on this day, and to join in the celebration ceremonies. And witness herof, I have hereunder set my hand and have had the seal of the city of Lake Forest affixed to this 26th day of April, 2024. Okay, the next item on the agenda is comments by city manager. At this time, I'd like to introduce Byron Cutts, Superintendent of Engineering, and Michael Thomas, Director of Public Works.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. Let's see here. Tonight, I will be giving an update on the boardwalk project as there are some schedule options for us to discuss and ultimately make a decision going forward. In terms of the bluff construction, this is the work that started in the fall through the winter, and went really well. We had a mild winter where we were able to really keep construction going. And at this point, they're really substantially complete with all of the bluff work. As you can see on the map, you see all the yellow there, that seed and blanket, meaning that area has already been stabilized, the wall is completely done. So that project went really well. The remaining work is just restoration, which will occur after the boardwalk project. So there's some, a couple of reasons for schedule changes, really, why we're here tonight. So originally, the boardwalk project was slated to be completed by Memorial Day weekend, have a ribbon cutting at that time, and have it open for people to use prior to the summer. So once construction started, the steep slopes, looking at the picture there, really made the foundation installation challenging. Looking at that picture, that's a stabilized slope already, but when they were doing the actual work, it was even rougher than that. So there's a total of 88 of these concrete piers that you see in that picture. 24 of those require slight design adjustments to the steel, of how the steel goes under the boardwalk, and that is due to the as-built conditions of how the piers were installed. So we went to the contractor that installed those piers and discussed that with them. The good thing is, is that ultimately, the boardwalk is going to be safe, and I'll go through that in a minute. But ultimately, the structural integrity of the boardwalk is going to be as safe as it was previously. There's just some slight adjustments to how the steel fits below the boardwalk and to the foundations. Ultimately, the contractor that installed these is paying or has paid for the redetailing, so basically like redesign, as well as any additional steel costs. They will also be paying for that. So like I mentioned a minute ago, just to reiterate structurally, the design going forward, everything will look exactly the same up top. There's just some slight changes down below, and it'll be as safe as originally planned. So now, looking here at a map, this is a site layout. And so really, what I want to do is kind of portray what this will look like to an average beachgoer. You'll see in a minute, we'll have two different schedule options. One is earlier in the summer, one is a little bit later. So I just want you to be able to visualize kind of what the impacts will look like to someone that's maybe going to the beach, walking along the beach, putting a boat in. So we have some different colors here. The red is the work zone, so that is basically the area during construction that'll be unavailable to residents. The blue, which goes through the boat storage area, is basically how the contractor will get equipment and materials to the bottom of the bluff, because the majority of the boardwalk will be constructed from the bottom. So this is actually the same access path that we use for the bluff construction, and we've been coordinating with the sailing program and will there. So they're used to this, you know, this is the same path, like I said, we use for the bluff. So once they basically get the equipment in, so the equipment they'll be using for this, I guess I should just establish kind of what it'll look like. So we all saw bur oak, we all know kind of what that looked like. That was a very, there was a lot of disturbance with that. This isn't that kind of construction. Basically, they'll be bringing in steel maybe three times. And then on a daily basis, it'll be some pickup trucks that'll come through. They will have a crane that'll be there about a month, but once the crane is on-site, they're going to keep it there. So I just want to establish that quick. The stars you see, the orange stars, is basically the three locations where at times they'll be moving the crane, there'll only be one crane, but they'll move it depending on what they're lifting, where the crane will be situated to lift up the steel or the wood. But it is mostly all within the work zone, except for the one star that's up at the north parking lot there. And I think the work up in that north parking lot will only need a few parking spaces, and it'll only be for like a week or two. The important thing here, I probably should have started with this, is that the brick walkway will be open the whole time. That's the reason why we're show that blue through the boat storage area, is we're getting our access through the boat storage area so we can keep the brick walkway open at all times. Another thing to note, you'll see some orange kind of on the left in the north part of the parking lot. We're taking about four or five parking spots there so that the contractor can pre-cut the wood before they bring it on the boardwalk. In terms of what the crane will look like, we have a picture here of what we think the crane will look like. Probably looking at it, probably looks like it's huge, and it is big. But I will say, in the world of cranes, there's a lot of bigger cranes than this. So once it is on-site, like I mentioned a minute ago, it'll stay within the work zone. So now, this is really, you know, where the decisions are to be made tonight, or the different options that we're looking at. So real quick, I'll just do a brief summary of kind of just the major differences, and then I can go into them a little bit more. So there's really two options. One is option one, which is basically starting in late May, early June, basically going through the majority of peak beach season, which is what we kind of show in blue. And we're showing peak beach season basically as June and July, and then going into the first week of August, basically to Lake Forest Day. So that's option one. It's basically just start as soon as you can, as soon as we can get through all the approvals, the shop drawings, the fabrication. But it'll be, it'll be going on during that peak beach season. The good thing about option one is you get done in August. We can go ahead and do the restoration, which we'll do in August, minus the trees, which we'll do in October, when it's a little bit cooler and after the cicadas have gone through. So there's some trade-offs with option one. Basically, you're starting earlier, you're going through beach season, but you get done a little bit earlier. You can do that ribbon cutting during the summer when it's really nice out. Option two, the next row down on that chart, you can see it basically starts right after Lake Forest Day. I think August, I guess August 5th, August 6th, or August 7th. We're still kind of dialing that in. But really, the intent of this one was to try to have the schedule start after that peak beach season, which it does. I do realize in August, there's still a lot of boaters, especially depending on the weather, so we understand that. But this option basically avoids the peak beach season while still finishing early enough in the fall where we should be able to complete all of the landscape restoration. Again, the weather in October, November, kind of as we show there in that orange, it's unpredictable. No one knows what it'll look like on any given year. So, you know, if we get snow in October, of course, that could change option two, just like rain could change option one in June and July. So I just wanted to throw that out there. Down on the bottom, we just have some descriptions of kind of what the work would look like and sound like. So the steel erection, that's a crane that I showed you earlier. I was trying to think of a noise to compare it to. I'm thinking like a concrete truck. I mean, there will be times where it'll be revving up to do a lift, but other than that, I don't think it'll be too loud compared to some of the other construction we have in town. The decking insulation will be pretty similar to any other, you know, work of someone doing a deck in their yard, where there will be sawing and hammering and that type of work. And then the sod and trees, we're all pretty familiar with, very light noise, similar to residential landscaping. So this chart really is a good, I kind of show on the trade-offs. I went into it a little bit on the previous page. But for option one and option two, there's different considerations, and there's trade-offs to both. So I'll run real quick through the different rows. Looking on the left is kind of the category of what we're describing. So the first one is project completion. Option one basically has the pathway available earliest, which is of these two options, which is late summer. You have the ribbon cutting in late summer, hopefully the weather is nice. Option two, you're pushing that back a little bit further, and you should have the path available sometime in mid-fall, which, you know, depending on the weather, it could be nice or it could be very cold as well. And then the ribbon cutting would be in mid-fall as well. Now, going to the next row down, impacts during beach season with option one. The majority of the construction overlaps the peak beach season and the sailing programs. One point, though, is that the work is really the most southern cell, where depending on the people, a lot of people actually use the cells north of there. So you could argue that this area is kind of one of the lesser-used beach areas anyways. But I just want to make sure it's clear that it does overlap the beach season. Whereas option two, partial construction overlap, which I mentioned on the previous chart. In terms of restoration completion, with the current schedules here shown, without any major changes, we're pretty comfortable with the trees and shrubs being planted this year. Also to note, in the previous budget, or in this year, the upcoming budget, rather, we did budget for expanding the boatyard a little bit to the north, which we were going to basically wrap up that work following this, where with both of these options, we should be able to complete that asphalt as well. In terms of schedule concerns, there's really kind of some trade-offs in between option one and option two. Basically, option one is tighter on the front, meaning to start, when we said we were going to start, all of the shop drawings, fabrication, all that stuff needs to go without hiccups. If we have any hiccups, we could lose a week pretty easily. On the flip side, there's a lot of time for option one on the back end, meaning if there's any delays during construction, we have plenty of time, several months, to complete the actual work before winter. So now, moving to the right on that same row, option two, I would say the front end, there is a little bit more time, sufficient time for approvals. On the back end, there isn't quite as much time, but I would say there's still sufficient time if there were any issues during construction. Then moving to the bottom row, materials and labor costs. This is related just to the schedule choice being made here today. It's not going into any like change orders, if there were to any, to occur on the job. It's just related to the schedule choice. Option one currently does not have any additional costs related to the schedule choice, where option two, basically with option two, we're leaving that area fenced off during the summer. We're not going to come back and sod it first and then rip it out. So that does have a cost just for maintaining that fencing, and we're just estimating it conservatively at $10,000 to $15,000. And now that brings us to really the decisions to be made tonight. So again, just to summarize, there's two options. Option one, which is starting as early as we can. We do overlap the beach season, but it gives us plenty of time on the back end for accommodating any delays, and it gets us a ribbon cutting, most likely in warm weather. Whereas schedule two, it accommodates the beach season, meaning we don't overlap with it that much. But now you're pushing the construction back and not having, well, you're having a ribbon cutting in the fall where it's potentially colder, and then you're risking maybe, you know, not completing all the restoration prior to the fall. So I will say, we've been internally talking about this for a long time. We were supposed to present this two weeks ago. We've had a lot of healthy debate all the way to this morning. So there was differing opinions, which I think is good. Just with the different trade-offs, I mean, we think that option two gives a little bit more on the front end if there are any delays with the contractor, and it does avoid the beach season. So currently, the staff is recommending option two. But with either option, we vetted them both out with the contractor. And currently, as the schedule sits, both options are viable. So with that, I can answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Coots?
Yeah, just one question that I had. I saw in one of your earlier slides that there was going to be no weekend work for schedule one, but can you clarify if there's going to be weekend work in schedule two, please?
Yes, thank you for asking that. I meant to bring that up. So, yeah, so if you're looking at option one, so we're looking at that row there, just above it, you see peak beach season, it says no weekend work. So basically, we just made a staff decision that if we were going to overlap the beach season that much, we were going to basically not allow Saturday work. So in doing that, basically, we added a week to that schedule. So if you actually count the yellow boxes, so the yellow boxes is basically the heavy construction, whereas the green is restoration. But you'll notice option one actually has 10 boxes, while option two only has nine boxes. So for option two, we were allowing them to utilize every Saturday, which at this point, I believe they do plan on doing that. And I would say for both options, I believe they would be working like at least 10 or 12-hour days for either of these options. But to answer the question, option two does allow Saturday work, whereas option one does not allow Saturday work within that two-month window.
How certain is the start time for option one? Is the contractor pretty clear on what needs to get done? Because you could kind of slip on that, and then you have like a hybrid option where you, maybe you start later, you know, three or four weeks, and then you're kind of all over the entire.
So I would say actually, option two is actually a hybrid option. There was actually an option three that actually started later in the year, but then we ended up saying that that was too risky. The restoration was basically, I mean, we weren't finishing up to November. It was too risky, so we ended up deleting option three, and that's why we're presenting option two, which is the hybrid. I will say, we've been talking to the contractor basically every day. I mean, as a schedule currently sits, this is the most accurate schedule that I have. But I will say that the project has had, you know, it's just, it may seem like a simple project, but I will say, just due to building it on the slope and maintaining all the ADA slopes and all of that, it is actually pretty intricate, and the project has proven that there has been little things along the way that we've had to navigate and basically, like little hiccups that we've had to navigate. So, I mean, in terms of that, option two would be a little bit safer just because it gives you a couple months, a couple months extra just to navigate that. Currently, though, with option one, you know, let's say worst-case scenario, there was an additional week during shop drawings and fabrication. You would be, or we would be inheriting that week immediately as a delay, a day for day. So let's say we went with option one, which we know is tight, and then you add another week, basically, you wouldn't be finishing the first week of August. You would be finishing the second week of August.
Alderman?
Thank you, Mayor. Byron, if, coming, picking up on Alderman Waller's question about the six, not working on Saturdays for option one, is there a change to the cost if the council felt that working, doing a 16-week work week for option one was preferable to get it done quicker?
I do not believe they were passing that Saturday cost on us. So as of now, I would say.
El rate option one's delivery, in theory, by doing, by going to a Saturday work schedule.
Correct, we would gain that week back, and then they would both be nine-week schedules, correct?
And then, I'm sorry. And thank you, Byron. And really, just for the benefit of the public and people who may have an interest in it, all the work is going to be concentrated down at the south end of the beach. So the three cells that are north of there, they really should have little or no impact on the patrons down at the beach, correct?
Yes, that's correct. And one thing I probably should have pointed out, and I'll go to this slide, the intro slide, because it shows it best. I wish I could zoom in. But if you can kind of see where the playground areas, the playground is, to the north of that, to the right, you can see it's actually green now. And this aerial was taken, I don't know, Thursday, Friday last week. So basically, what that is, is that is new sod that we just planted, because this area was within the bluff, the bluff construction zone. But we've completed that, we don't need it for the boardwalk, so that's why we went ahead and sodded it. So that is additional area that we're able to give back, that'll be open and available this whole year and going forward. That was closed previously for the bluff.
Alderman Novak?
With the boats that are in the boatyard, are they going to be able to get out if you're staging in that area? Is there going to be an access point?
Correct, so.
Where people can get their boats out?
Yes, there is an access point. I believe it's somewhere kind of where those cranes are. There's like a gate there. Basically, what they had to do last year is we had these wood planks that are about four by four, like four inches by four inches, where we had the trucks basically drive on those. And the reason for that was to kind of lessen the impacts to the asphalt. That being said, we've coordinated with the sailing program, and after them dealing with that last year for the bluff, and with the youth pulling some of the boats across, that we had a little ramps built to navigate that. They said that that was too difficult, so we are going to remove those, so it'll just be asphalt. But now our trucks will be driving on that asphalt when they're navigating through the boat storage area. That being said, I indicated in the beginning, we'll have three steel deliveries, so that will be a heavy load, but it's three times. And then on a daily basis, we're going to try to just limit it to pickup trucks.
So people who have boats down there and the sailing program will not be impacted by this?
There will be some coordination, but their access will be available all the time.
And does the sailing program have a preference for when this all happens?
They did not give a certain option. They basically just said, yeah, there was some inconvenience last year just due to those planks that I mentioned, but by removing those, that helps them a lot.
Okay. And the kayaks are all accessible? I'm looking at the water end of that. That's where all the kayaks and?
I believe so.
And that's not impacted by any of this? That whole day rental thing that the park district runs?
Correct, yeah, those would be available.
The ghost of Joe Waldeck.
So option two, is that's where the staff is? And is that where the PDC kind of netted out?
No, the staff, the staff was divided on it. And then, Public Works, we were divided on it. Within the Public Works Committee, there was some discussion, and...
I mean, why don't you guys share your thoughts on how you think about it? You guys did the work.
Well, my question was regards to the sailing program, and being that it's a heavy program, June, July. Then when we, when I saw the next slide, which was the additional costs of $10,000 to $15,000, I said, oh, you sold me at option one. To say, let's move, to save the money.
Yeah, and I'll just note that consider it a pretty soft staff recommendation. As Byron noted, there's, you know, varying opinions within the group. And again, there's no right or wrong answer to it. It was really trying to balance minimizing the impact to beachgoers during peak beach season versus wanting to get the project done as quickly as possible. And I think as Alderman Gashgarian noted, that there are benefits to how isolated the construction staging area is relative to where most of the beach patrons are in the northern cells. So, again, staff recommendation was two, but not a real strong recommendation. I think there are clearly pros and cons to both options, and that's why we tried to present those objectively tonight.
Well, I think too, the Public Works, there's several comments about the donors and the anticipation of this project and wanting to get moving on it, too, was part of it.
Yeah, but you know, more importantly, though, I mean, this has been a fantastic project. The staff has done a wonderful job. It's not an easy one. There's a lot of stuff that goes into it, only Alderman Waller can appreciate, being an engineer. But it's a big, big project. You know, I'm kind of excited to say, hey, let's get it up and going. Let's get this project finalized. I realize there may be some minor inconveniences, which I do perceive as minor. But gosh, it'd be great for people to be able to walk up and down that boardwalk over Labor Day and, you know, and really start enjoying it sooner rather than later. And I, you know, do I have strong opinions on it? No, but I just think, if we can finish this up and move on to the next project, let's do it.
How confident are you that phase one, that option one is doable in terms of what you're calling the hiccups?
Yeah, no, I understand. I mean, right now, as of today, I'm pretty confident. But I mean, I would say plus or minus a week, we're fairly confident. I mean, I would say worst-case scenario could change two weeks. But I would think, yeah, I would be pretty safe that worst-case, we would maybe add a week just due to some of the shop drawing review that they've had to do.
Any other comments?
I would just ask council to consider whether, if we chose option one, does doing, allowing Saturday construction concern anybody? Or does the opportunity to finish it quicker offset that concern?
Alderman Powers?
I'm kind of, I'm exact same position. I say we get the show on the road. And I was going to ask, they can't start before the last week in May? Is that just a supply-delivery issue, or?
Yeah, so the redesign was completed, I don't know, in about the last two to three weeks. There were, they kind of did it in two different packages. And then that goes to shop, someone at the fabricator that basically reviews those shop drawings. I believe they're mostly through that, and then they'll get to the fabrication stage. So basically, it is assuming that just everything keeps moving in order to start option one as we're showing it.
Other comments?
I mean, it seems like everyone wants to get it done as soon as possible, but do it the right way, and we have some latitude to, you know, to search on Saturdays if we need to, when it's not as big a disruption. But it seems like it's hard to gauge the noise and the crowd and where people are, but it seems like everyone's around option one.
The other part of it, we all look here, June is not necessarily each season. June can be really cold. So I think I'd rather have it start in June when maybe not be speech weather, as opposed to starting in August when it's definitely speech weather.
I just think there's a perception that if there's no work going on in the summer, we're going to look, the public's going to come back to us and ask us why there's no work going on. So from a perception point of view, I think starting earlier is fine. The first three or four weeks are going to be the crane work. The next three or four weeks are going to be the woodwork on the deck, and then the final couple of weeks is going to be the handrail. So by the time we get towards the end of July, they're going to be working on the handrails, some of the finer stuff.
Lighting.
And so they're not going to be very busy.
I like the idea of the ramp being available for people to use when you're going to the beach in August and September.
Other comments? Okay, thank you for thoughtful comments. What are you asking of us tonight, to take an actual vote on this?
No, it's not requiring a vote, just a clear consensus on option one versus option two. It appears to me that there's a pretty strong consensus for option It appears to me that there's a pretty strong consensus for option one, is there any Alderman who would disagree with that?
Option one with Saturdays?
I think if so, I think if-
Leave that up to the staff.
Yeah, leave it up, fast as possible, with good quality and, you know, risk mitigation, you know?
Okay, understood.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, city manager, do you have any other comments?
No, that's it for this evening, thank you.
Thank you for that. All right, the next item is opportunity for citizens to address the council, is there anyone present who would like to address the city council at this time? Okay, seeing none. There are no committee reports tonight, so we will move on to items for omnibus vote consideration. I'll read each item, and if there are any items that you would like, have, to like to have removed or taken separately, please notify me after I've read all of the items, there are 11 items tonight. Item one, approval of the March 18th, 2024 city council meeting minutes. Item two, approval of the check register for the period of February 24th through March 22nd, 2024. Item three, approval of a resolution reallocating 2024 volume cap to the Village of Buffalo Grove, Illinois. Item four, request to waive the bid process and consider approval to purchase a replacement core data switch, installation services and maintenance from Heartland Business Systems in the amount of $38,897.43. Item five, a request to waive the bid process and consider approval of a three-year agreement with governmentjobs.com for NeoGov Human Resource Management System Software Maintenance in the amount of $105,804.65. Item six, request to waive the bid process and consider approval of the purchase of a new Cisco UCS Blades for virtual machine computing from Heartland Business Systems in the amount of $34,938.90. Item seven, approval to award a one-year contract for Recreation Department Program Bussing Services to Safeway. Item eight, approval of the annual tree purchasing for fiscal year 2025 for an amount not to exceed $100,000. Item nine, approval of a recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Board to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Sundance Lawn Care for citywide grounds maintenance services in the parks fiscal year 2025 budget for an amount not to exceed $203,000. Item 10, consideration of a waiver of permit fees associated with the Deerpath Park Athletic Turf Fields Project at 115 West Deerpath in the amount of $34,081.64, approval by motion. The final item is consideration of an ordinance approving a recommendation from the Building Review Board for 766 Highview Terrace, first reading and if desired by the city council, final approval. Is there any item that you would like removed or taken separately at this time? Okay, hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the 11 omnibus items as presented?
So moved, signed.
Roll call, vote please.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Alderman Walters?
Aye.
7808, Portion Carries.
Thank you. There is no old business this evening, so we will move on to new business. This time we'll be discussing consideration of an appeal of a decision of the Historic Preservation Commission granting a certificate of appropriateness approving the design aspects of a replacement outdoor terrace at the northwest corner of the Gordon Center at 400 Illinois Road. Tonight, the council will be considering an appeal of a decision of the Historic Preservation Commission to approve a certificate of appropriateness for a replacement outdoor terrace at the Gordon Center building. The council does not often hear appeals, and I want to be sure that all of us on the account, on the council, as well as the residents who filed this appeal, and all other interested parties, understand what is before the council for consideration tonight, and perhaps more importantly, what is not before the city council. The city council is not conducting a public hearing on this appeal, that work has already been done by the HPC. The city council is not receiving new evidence in this matter, as explained in the city guidelines for appeals, which are included in the city council packet for tonight's meeting. The council will be considering whether to uphold or overturn the HPC's approval of a certificate of appropriateness for the replacement outdoor terrace at the Gordon Center based on the standards contained in the city code as those standards are applied in the context of the council's other duties and responsibilities to the city. Alternatively, the council could remand the matter back to the HPC for further proceedings. Since we are ready to proceed, I'd like to turn it over to the city attorney Tappendorf to briefly review the appeals procedures and the council's responsibilities in considering this appeal.
Thank you, Mayor Tac, so we've done this type of appeal a couple of times, and I've talked about what the legal context of these appeals are. One is the city code provisions that has the Historic Preservation Commission their authority and also their jurisdiction, which is to decide certificates of appropriateness, those applications. Their decision is a final one, but it is subject to appeal to the city council, and that's what we're here tonight. There was an approval of a certificate of appropriateness by the commission, normally that would be the, the last word, they're a final decision-making, it's not a recommendation to you, but it has been appealed to you. There are, there's language within the city code that talks about the standards, that, that we've, we've been through this before, where the standards that the city council applies are the same standards as were applied by the Historic Preservation Commission, except that you're allowed to consider those standards in the context of the promotion of the public health, safety, and welfare, and your fiduciary responsibilities to the city. So it's within that context that you'll decide this appeal tonight. There are appeal guidelines, those are in the packet, I'm not going to repeat those, but they do provide some structure for how the hearing will proceed, or not hearing, but the meeting will proceed. Again, as Mayor Tac noted, this is not a hearing, we're not receiving, introducing, or speaking about new evidence. The appellants will be provided the opportunity to present a summary of, of what they presented before the HPC. If any member of the public wants to speak, it all needs to be in the context of what happened at the HPC, so it's not a public hearing, we're not rehearing everything. There are three options for action, those are also listed in the agenda, so they're spelled out pretty clearly when we get to that point of making a motion. One would be to deny the appeal, and that would mean that you're upholding the HPC's decision to grant the certificate of appropriateness. The other would be to grant the appeal, which would overturn the HPC. If that is the motion, then we would bring back draft findings at the next city council meeting for you to act on. And the last, again, as the mayor said, would be to remand it back. We do ask if there is a remand, that you provide some direction, so because the HPC's already done a lot of work, they've already been through this, there's a lot of information and material you have, that they understand what it is that they're to look at. So mayor, that concludes my remarks, unless anyone has any questions about the process.
Other questions for the city attorney? Okay, hearing none, at this time I would like to invite the appellants to present their appeal. You will have five minutes, and I ask that you please adhere to the allotted time.
Today is April Fool's Day, and days like this, like Thanksgiving, are times to reflect on Thanksgiving, what we're thankful for, and on days like this, April Fool's Day is, how fallible are we? And certainly, we're not infallible, and our appeal for the HPC's approval is, we're asking for a remand, not to show that they're wrong, or they failed, or they made a mistake, but that this situation is unique, the developer is not an ordinary private developer or an ordinary citizen. It's, it's, the Venn diagrams are like this, the developer is the owner, is the landlord, is the petitioner, is the approval of the ordinances, the provider of the findings and the support. This is an unusual situation, and the developer in and of itself, you all in this chamber, this is the developer's chamber, and sometimes we get into echo chambers. I do it in my own head, we do it in our family, we hear the same thing, and so we think, hmm, yeah, this works. Well, sometimes it doesn't, and particularly in unusual situations like this. Again, this developer is not an ordinary developer, it's a government of itself, for itself, by itself, for its own building, and it, it causes us to look at, how impartial can one be? Is there self-dealing, how interested are people outside this bubble in how fair this is? And everyone is well-meaning, I know that, but sometimes we get caught up in things, and I was thinking about how to spin this so you all understand us neighbors, we have three properties, they're all designated significant contributing historic properties. They're, the Draskas, 120-some years old, ours is, we have a coach house, that's one of the oldest coach houses in Lake Forest, has its own number, you can see the stable, the sled bay. This is what makes our community interesting and unique, it's not just a coach house. It really was a coach house, and it predates the school. But I've been thinking about it, there are two books that I think about when I think about this situation. One is The Emperor Has New Clothes, and the other is To Kill a Mockingbird. And the first one is this historic situation, and there are properties right there on Deerpath. But The Emperor Has New Clothes is about a visual thing, and everyone's sort of in echo chamber saying, yeah, he's got new clothes, except it takes one person outside the chamber to say, no, I don't see it. And the second book is about lots of things, but the primary thing is, it's a community echo chamber. It's a small town like ours, where there's a group think, everybody thinks alike and thinks this is appropriate, but Atticus doesn't, and he was my friend's grandfather. Her Aunt Nell, or Harper Lee, wrote To Kill a Mockingbird about small-town relationships, point of view. And these two books are, maybe you can understand why we, as the neighbors, and we're not the government, we're not, we're individuals, and the city in all its writings talks about individual property rights, and the integrity of the character of homes like this, these are unique Victorian old homes. So I have never operated one of these, so bear with me, so we took some pictures, and, let's just go through it, that's probably the best way. It's not working. That was five minutes? Wow. My kid said land the plane, mom, well, I guess I didn't. This one? Okay, that's, just quickly go through here, our porch, blah, 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 the front of Deerpath, there's the coach house, one of the oldest coach houses in Lake Forest, it still has a tack from the horses. It's back there, this is 381, another historic home, there's the spot where they want to build, see our homes right there by that double in size? It was an egress and, and, and those are a crude way of looking what it's going to look like from the streetscape, there are five streetscapes, there's Western, the train, McKinley.
Okay.
Okay, there we go, just quickly go through there, and the reason why the predicator for this all was water, it's built on a ravine.
Okay, I neglected to ask you to please state your name and your address, just so that everybody who might not know you personally knows.
You don't know me yet, it's Mary Sanders, it's three, ah, there's that ravine that goes right behind our house, that's why Gordon has water problems, it's not for anything but that, and 391 East Deerpath. It's called the Witch Hazel Ravine, but it's now called the Seminary Ravine.
Okay, thank you very much.
This is the liquor being served?
Time is, is finished, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Other questions? Okay. I understand there is a, an appellant neighbor who would like to speak, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
Is there a neighbor who would like to speak?
There's a homeowner.
Okay, so you're, you're the neighbor.
Well, there, there are three neighbors.
Okay, fair enough, okay. Can we have the next person who would like to speak, and please state your name and your address?
You guys hear me? So I'm Chris Draska, I grew up in Lake Forest, I live at 381 East Deerpath Road, which is directly behind the, or in front of the Gordon Center, whichever way you look at it. For the most part, you know, the, some of the stuff they do, I think is great, but overall, that terrace is going to be a nuisance to the neighborhood, because it's going to provide people and noise. And if you put liquor out there, it's just going to be just an unbelievable headache for me, for my family, for my kids. I don't want to come home after a long work week and have to hear people outside loud banging music, the, the bass already shakes my house during the summertime. So I mean, obviously, people want to have parties there, not a problem, but if you're going to add a huge terrace, you're going to serve alcohol outside, I mean, come on, we all know what alcohol does with people, it's just going to be a problem. People are going to smoke cigarettes outside, that door's going to be open constantly, and we're just going to hear music until midnight or whenever they shut the thing off. Anyone else want to speak?
Are you finished?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much, are there any questions? Okay, thank you.
I think I know what you're asking, where's the resident in the coach house? Would like to make a statement, but she recently, she had a child who died, and it's, it's very wrong for her to talk. She'd like to know if I can be part of this for her.
Yeah, we, we had a discussion about this, and each of you are allowed to present your own appeal, but not act as a proxy and present your own appeal, so. Unless there is someone else who would like to come up and present on their own, not as a proxy for someone else, then we'll move on. Sure, please come up. Please come up, state your name, your address.
My name is Landon Winnett, my address is 389 Deerpath, so I'm directly behind the- Show me where it is, because I don't know where it is.
No visual relationship, no visible relationship and no-
Compatibility to our adjoining property structures, sites and place of historic residential district. Personally, I moved to Lake Forest for the peace, for, for, not to, not to have to fight to have a, a structure within a few feet of my bedroom, that's going to cause a lot of noise and a lot of disruption to my life, so, so that's, that's all, that's all I can say.
Okay, are there any que- Okay. Are there any questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. This time, I'd like to ask Director Cerniak, who's designated by the HPC chair to provide a report on the HPC proceedings on this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is an appeal of a decision by the Historic Preservation Commission to approve a replacement terrace at Gorton Center. This project was actually initiated by the city. The current terrace is deteriorating due to some drainage issues. The replacement terrace would be preceded by some storm drainage improvements that would occur after the existing terrace is demolished and before the new terrace is constructed. The Historic Preservation Commission has a narrow purview. The commission considers the design aspects of a project, and they do not have purview over the use aspects. You will remember that on February 20th, this city council approved a, an update to the Gorton Center special use permit, based on a unanimous recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals. The Zoning Board of Appeals, over the course of two meetings, heard public testimony, and recommended to this council that 12 conditions of approval be established in the special use permit. Those conditions establish limitations, set parameters, because the pre-existing special use permit had no such parameters. Those parameters do speak to limitations on events. They speak specifically to this terrace being intended for passive uses. The special use permit that you approved does limit access, requires that doors from both the Stewart Room and Nagel Room remain closed when there are events in those spaces. The Historic Preservation Commission did not discuss use. Again, it's not their purview. What the commission did consider, again, various design aspects, including visual compatibility to not only the Gorton building, the historic Gorton building, but to the broader historic district, to the central business district, considered architectural detailing, exterior materials. They recognized that no variances were being requested, but simply the terrace was being replaced and being expanded slightly. The existing terrace is, is narrow, can accommodate basically one, one table across. At the widest part, the replacement terrace is proposed at 16 feet. The commission was sensitive to the placement of stairs, and the stairs, they were presented with a couple alternative plans. They approved a plan with the stairs directed toward the parking lot, as opposed to drawing people onto the north side of the terrace closer to the residential homes. The commission determined, they reviewed all 17 standards, which they are obligated to do. Of those 17 standards, they determined that 12 were applicable to this request. And those 12 standards are detailed. The certificate of appropriateness is included in your packet, I believe, on page 44. The findings are detailed there, but in summary, the preservation, the Historic Preservation Commission considered the various items out up there: height, proportions, materials, relationship, compatibility to the existing building, visibility from the streetscape. So they apply the standards that they are obligated and authorized to apply. The terrace that is being replaced is located at the northwest corner of the building. The existing terrace is located in this area. The proposed terrace will follow generally the same footprint. The existing terrace is shown in a dotted line. The terrace gets slightly wider, again, at the maximum width. The terrace is 16 feet across, which accommodates two round tables for passive use. Again, the stairs are located at the corner. Although there were alternative plans that brought the stairs and a, a plan that offered a ramp on this side, the commission felt strongly that the west-facing facade was really the appropriate location for people to enter and exit this terrace. A couple of renderings of the proposed terrace, again, in the same location, generally located to the west side of the building, slightly to the north, very close to the existing footprint. Again, another image. The Historic Preservation Commission, after hearing a presentation from the architect, Ed Deegan, who prepared designs for the city for consideration by both city staff and Gorton staff, the Historic Preservation Commission heard testimony. They deliberated, discussed the 17 standards, and ultimately voted six to zero to approve a certificate of appropriateness, approving the replacement terrace. As reviewed by the city attorney, with respect to this appeal, you have three options before you tonight. Approve the appeal, which would overturn the decision of the Historic Preservation Commission. If you choose to move in that direction, it would be appropriate to direct city staff and the city attorney to prepare findings based on your deliberations and your conclusions that lead you to that decision. Second, you can deny the appeal and uphold the decision of the Historic Preservation Commission. And third, remand the petition back to the Historic Preservation Commission. Again, as noted by the city attorney, if you choose to take that action, we would ask that you provide direction, so the Historic Preservation Commission understands where they may have erred and, and where they should focus their discussion. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Alderman, no.
There wasn't any, any information here about permanent furniture being put on these chairs? Is there a plan for that, or is it documented?
The Historic Preservation Commission asked that question, if there would be furniture permanently installed, and the answer is no. The, the furniture would be seasonal and could be moved around.
And what's kind of furniture are we talking about?
A table and chairs, for passive use.
Are there any other questions for Director Cerniak?
I have one. Forgive me, Mayor. So when, when we most recently revised a special use permit for Gorton, a few months ago, was there consideration in relevance to this? For example, I know that use over at Gorton has expanded really over the last four years, given that the challenges we've had with COVID. But was there any consideration in terms of, hey, if we, if we do this terrace? I know this initially came in front of us over a year ago, if I'm not mistaken. When was this first floated?
I believe an initial terrace came before the Historic Preservation Commission about a year ago. I think in January 2023. And we stepped back at that point to allow the Zoning Board of Appeals to consider updates to the special use permit because of concerns about activities. So some parameters were put in place at that time.
So some of those considerations were taken into account as the Zoning Board of Appeals considered a special use permit, which ultimately made its way to us. So part of that SUP has taken into consideration usage out there, correct?
Absolutely. The special use permit, the ordinance that you approved, speaks specifically to the fact that the terrace is intended for passive uses, not for active uses, and that during events, during rental events in the Stewart Room and the Nagel Room, the doors to those rooms must remain closed. They cannot be propped open to allow that type of activity to filter out onto the terrace.
And if I could have one more and indulge me, I'm sorry, Mayor. Part of that SUP, as we approved a few months ago, requires onsite monitoring from Gorton staff to adhere to the parameters that have been set forth within that SUP?
It does. Yes.
All right, good. Thank you. Okay. Are there other questions, comments? Okay, thank you. Okay. Although this is not a public hearing, I would like to offer those members of the public who desire to provide a comment on this matter an opportunity to speak. Each speaker will be given two minutes to provide a public comment on the appeal as stated in the city's Guidelines for Appeals. Please remember that the HPC has already conducted the public hearing on this matter, and council members have been provided with and are well aware of the testimony and evidence provided by those of you who participated in the public hearing. So while we look forward to hearing from you, there is no need to repeat what you have already stated previously before the HPC. The city clerk will keep track of time, so please play, pay attention to our cues on when your time is nearing an end, so we can ensure that everyone who wants to speak has the opportunity tonight. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on this matter at this time? Okay, seeing none. At this time, we'll give the council one last chance for questions that you might have of the appellants, Director Cerniak, or the city manager concerning this matter. No further questions? Okay. Is there additional discussion that you would like to have? Comments, if not questions? Yes, Alderman, no.
I'm heartened that we have a special use permit in place now, and that there are parameters that have been set by the zoning board and approved by the city council for the neighbors to understand what the limits are and what Gorton can and cannot do. And as a result of the terms of that special use permit, hopefully, some of the concerns you have will be abated. And if Gorton isn't doing what they're, if they're not behaving the way they're supposed to under this special use permit, now we have a process by which to hold them accountable, to keep the, the parameters that are in place on them. So I'm heartened by that. I think the terrace is appropriate. I, I'm glad we have this special use permit to kind of frame this situation for everybody involved.
Okay. Are there other comments? Okay, at this time, I'm going to ask for a motion to move forward. Does anybody require a clarification of the options available? Or if not, okay. The first option would be to deny the appeal and uphold the Historic Preservation Commission's decision to grant a certificate of appropriateness, approving a replacement terrace at the northwest corner of the Gorton Center. Is there a motion to approve?
To deny the appeal?
Well, yes.
I'd like to...
Approve the denial of the appeal, I'm sorry, to deny the appeal.
I'd like to make a motion to deny the appeal and uphold the decision of the Historic Preservation Commission.
Second. Okay. So this will be a roll call vote on the motion to deny the appeal and uphold the Historic Preservation Commission's decision.
Alderman, notes.
Aye.
Alderman Powers.
Aye.
Alderman Freshline.
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian.
Aye.
Alderman Weller.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Seven yeas, zero nay. Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any other comments that council members would make, like to make at this time? Okay, seeing none. There, at this time, I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn into executive session pursuant to five ILCS 120 slash two.
So moved.
Wait, let me finish.
I seem to always want to jump the gun there.
The city council will be discussing personnel owned by the, it's blanked out. Owned by the public body.
It's just personnel, compensation, and performance of a specific employee under 2C1 of the open meetings.
Okay, so that's the only justification. Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn into executive session?
So moved.
Second, please. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Powers.
Aye.
Alderman Freshline.
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian.
Aye.
Alderman Weller.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman notes.
Aye.
Okay.
Seven yeas, zero nay. Motion carries.
At this time, we'll adjourn into executive session. There will be no further business at the completion of the executive session.